Our allegiance is in the United States of America and to your knowledge for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. We have two visitors in the room. I know one in particular is here, John Thompson from the Thompson Organization specifically so that we can thank the Thompson Organization for their many years of generous dedication in the township family and us in the Thompson Organization family and supporting all of our various programs and especially this year, supporting this Performing Arts Series. And we are known now as the Thompson Organization Performing Arts Series. Is that what it's called? Performing Arts Series. And for that, their generous donation of $10,000. Come on up and give us this big check. Do we have a picture of the marquis?
Yeah, it's right behind you.
You're going to present that to him in a minute.
This is yours to us.
Yeah, you're presenting the check.
Can I hold this and do one of the other so we don't have two pictures?
You can or me or him?
Well, thank you, thank you. Here, you hold this. And then I'm holding this. You gave me the check and you get that. Fair exchange.
Fair exchange. Very good.
Does everyone else take it? Do you guys all want to give a video show?
Thank you. Thank you.
Very nice. Do you like it? I think it looks real good.
Looks real good.
You're on all of our materials and our newsletter and everyone else.
Can't hear you.
And supporting the -- and supporting -- It's all about the Thompson Organization supporting its family in Doylestown Township and Central Bucks and especially the arts in this area. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're proud to be -- Yeah, we're probably part of it and it's going to be a great summer, I think. So, it's going to be -- I know there's a lot of vibe going on this year. Last year was a warm-up and this year should be really good.
Yeah. Christening our new Covenant Bank Amphitheater in Central Park with the John Thompson and the Thompson Organization Performing Arts Series. How wonderful. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. It's very riveting. Maybe over about three minutes. Thank you for coming and thank everybody there from all of us.
We will. Thank you.
Hug to your God. Okay. Any other visitor public comment? Ms. Price? You have to take the --
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Patty Price. We live across from the Pine Run community and I'm here to ask your help because I've been trying to have the situation alleviated since November and it hasn't -- there's been no response to it. Pine Run has changed the lighting and our house is now in the spotlight so that in order for any room to be sleepable, you have to put up shades or curtains or the shutters. And this is an old stone farmhouse that doesn't have air conditioning, so we depend on being able to open the windows. And I'm here because Brian is the one who is really totally aggravated by this because we have to sleep with the shutters closed in the bedroom all the time now. I've spoken to Mr. Sinclair Salisbury about ordinances because I thought that the ordinance in the township read where the lighting had to stay on your property. Am I dreaming?
It shines down. They usually -- they put shields on them.
Yeah, they didn't. The previous administration, when they put a sodium light in at the end of the driveway that turned night into day, did put a baffle on it so that we weren't exposed to it. But, I mean, this is --
Have you contacted the folks at Pine Run?
I have contacted. Nobody does anything.
Oh, who did you speak to there?
The director of grounds or whatever.
Kathleen. Who, who, director?
But I did check, like I said, and Mr. Salisbury has yet to get back to me. And this was in November. He said he would come out in January when it was dark to see what was going on. I never heard back. I've called three times. There's been no response. And I spoke to his administrative assistant.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're absolutely welcome.
I'd like the dark back.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, next time just give us a call. We'll take care of it. You don't have to, you know, take the time out.
I've been calling.
No, call Stephanie or call me.
Oh, you directly?
Or call any of the supervisors.
Call any of the supervisors.
Yeah. Call the manager.
Sounds good to me.
Absolutely. Thank you.
There's also one other suggestion. They put in a carport and the carport has lights on all the time. Perhaps they could put a motion detector in so that the lights in the carport came on when someone approached it rather than all night long. It looks like a big Coca-Cola truck, what they put in.
Okay.
So, thank you, guys. I do appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got the Coca-Cola carport.
Carport. Okay. Any other visitor public comment? Hearing none? All right. We're next meeting on Tuesday, May 17th at 7:00 p.m. We're going to be closed on May 30th for Memorial Day. Touch a Truck this Saturday. It's 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It's free. John, bring your kids. Oh, they're too big now. Come, it's a fun day. Home Run Derby is Thursday, May 12th at Turk Baseball Fields. You got to check in at 4:30 and it starts, the Derby starts at 5:00. Wait. Check in at 4:00 p.m., Derby 5:00 p.m. Is that right?
They have to be checked in by 5:30.
4:30.
4:30.
Check in 4:30.
But they have to be checked in by 5:30.
All right. Just get there by 4:30 and check in. And then, and pre-registration is required. The Family Fund and Fitness Day is Saturday, May 15th at Central Park, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 and that's free. Barkminster Dog Show is Saturday, May 21st at Central Park, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. That's free. And the Doylestown Annual Township Golf Outing is June 6th at Doylestown Country Club. That is not free, but we do welcome everyone to participate. It is a fun event. Deadline for registration is May 15th. John, I got a foursome for you if you want to play with us. Or you could bring a foursome. We'll set it up for you. The 2017 Budget Work Session, the next one is scheduled for June 14th at 4:00 p.m. And please, everyone is welcome to attend. That's so the -- our next Budget Work Session again is June 14th at 4:00 p.m. And we're working on our 2017 budget. All right. Next item on the agenda is minutes approval for three of our prior meetings. We'll do them first, and we'll do them separately. The first one is April 5th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve that as a regular meeting of the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
I -- just two comments.
All right.
One --
Do I need to undo the motion?
It's up to you.
Okay.
The one, this may be up to Ken. In one section, Ken was referred to as Mrs. Snyder. And --
Well, this day and age, you never --
And you can't say anything about it.
Yeah. But the real important one was it's not, it's Bacato. B-A-C-A-T-O, not Barto. And I only bring that one up because in the future, people may wonder what that is. The other, the other one, I --
It's Bucks County Association Township. It should say B-C-A-T-O. Is it not B-C-A-T-O?
Not in the minutes I read. Anybody have the minutes in front of them?
I have the minutes in front of me.
I think it's the last --
All right. So, we'll correct the Mr. Snyder and --
Ms. -- okay.
From Mrs. Snyder.
Page three and then --
I don't see. Well, all right. And then if there's a mistake about Bacato.
It's B-A-C-T-O in the meeting minutes.
It's Bacto in the meeting. B-A-C-T-O.
It should be B-C-A-T-O.
Correct.
We will correct it.
Okay. All right. The minutes stand corrected for April, for the April 5th meeting. Road inspection minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Road inspection minutes for April 5th, 2016. Everyone a chance to review them, who attended that road inspection.
Yes.
Any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
All right, noted. Budget Work Session notes for April 12th, 2016. Everyone who attended have an opportunity to review.
Yes.
Any corrections, additions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I understand.
One, two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
Noted, thank you. All right. Correspondence. VIA has a request from Ms. Norad to waive $100 fee for signage. Is there a motion to approve that or do you care for discussion on questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That's a good thing. I mean, the designer house is raising funds for the hospital and the hospital is our largest part, one of our largest partners, aside from the Thompson Organization, one of our largest partners in Doylestown Township. All right. Reports from the solicitor.
That's your report in the public meeting, Madam Chairperson.
Thank you. Chief?
I'd just like to thank our facilities manager, Rick Shea, and his assistant, Rob Dando, for the work that they did over the last couple of months preparing at least the police department side for the switch over in the phone systems, which is kind of going on today and it's in its final thing. They did a phenomenal job running wires for us. And at the same time, they also helped to switch the detective's office and our conference room offices for the addition of our third detective. And that came out flawlessly and they were a pleasure to work with. I'd just like to thank them formally for their assistance in helping us out with that. That's all I have.
We'll pass it on.
All right, thank you.
Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Well, actually.
Uh-oh.
You want to come? We'll come back to you in a little bit?
Yes.
All right. Manager?
Dick and Mario and I just want to give you all an update. I know we have kept you in the loop on what was going on on Chestnut Valley Drive. I know it was sort of a surprise. We looked at it during road inspection and when we started the work out there, we didn't realize what we were going to run into. And I think Dick and Mary have come up with great solutions and things are moving on, but I know they both want to kind of give the detail of what's happening now out there.
Who's going to give the detail? You, Mario, or Dick?
Okay. As of right now, the base preparation and stabilizing has been completed and the road does seem to be in good shape for paving. And we need to add a little more stone to bring it up to the proper grade for paving. And I believe that begins on Friday and on Monday and Tuesday next week, they should be paving the road.
Okay.
So, there's a little item of business we need to attend to regarding the end of our road program. The amount of extra work has brought our cost up to about $824,000, which if you recall, our original bid was about $760,000. So, we had some money left over within budget, about $36,000. And I would like to have your permission to apply that fund, the remaining funds, and add an additional amount of about another 36 to get up to about $870,000.
$860.
Okay, $860. Break my leg. It's really important, that will allow us to finish all Wells Road and the two little cul-de-sacs right down next to Lower State Road. And it will also allow us to finalize the list of Chestnut Valley Drive. So, I request to spend that money for that. It will take you above budget by about $60,000. And I need to know what to do.
So, that's money that, that would come from the 2016 coffer that we had not budgeted for road repairs.
Yes, I believe.
So, we need to find $60,000 from someplace.
From somewhere.
Somewhere. Okay. Well, how about this? We look for it and then if we can find it, we'll give it to you. Unless you already know, unless you already know where it is.
We definitely can find it, but I was hoping you kind of take it out of reserve.
We need an action today because the contractor will be on site, won't be on site when you come back two or three weeks.
That's a fact you withheld from us. We need action today.
It just came about today, finalizing.
I would make the motion that we give Dick the authority to proceed and spend up to $860,000 and get the process going and in our meetings subsequent, we'll figure out where to get it from.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm fine doing that and I think it's also just important that our total 2016 budget stays where it's at, but we don't go over, like you said, let's find it and see what we can do.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I'm good for that.
All right. There's a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
You got it. Thanks, Dick.
And they're proposing to start on Wells Road possibly Monday or Tuesday at the latest. That's why it had to be done today.
While you're talking about that, we have the Chestnut Valley one. What's the status? Is the, the schedule obviously now got shifted because of the weather and stuff like that, but how much are you off on schedule, do you think?
A week, maybe?
Yeah. I mean, we're not really off that, that far. It really wasn't, well, there was a schedule.
Yeah.
But with the weather and, you know, this week, it's pretty much shot, so. And I just want to add one other thing to this. I want to thank the people of Chestnut Valley Drive. They have been fantastic, very supportive, very understanding and nobody, you know, complained about anything. And so, I just want to thank them for their patience over this little adventure. And as I said, come mid next week, we should be out of there if the rain stops.
Yeah.
Great.
Good.
Maybe your road crew could create a little sign that says, "From the road crew of Doylestown Township, thank you Chestnut Valley Drive residents and your patience."
Point well made.
Yeah. Why not? They would appreciate that. Oh, look at you, Karen.
Karen's a sign maker.
Karen's a sign maker. Anything else on that?
That's all we have.
So, what's happening on Wells Road and what do you think, what do you think the work on Wells Road is going to entail? I mean, days, you know, weeks?
It probably would be about a week's worth of work, you know, thereabouts. Because it's a, it's about a mile of road they're going to do from the whole, the whole thing.
Starting about 10 days or so.
I say, you know, outside, it would be two weeks.
Okay. So, we know what to look for then.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We are putting that on the website, by the way.
We are?
Daily updates.
Okay. So, check the website for information on the Wells Road and Chestnut Valley Road upgrades.
The whole schedule was out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, all of those.
It's all changed, so.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, engineer?
That's it.
Anything else, Director of Operations?
No, ma'am.
Manager?
Nothing else.
Okay. Supervisors. Sean, welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to report this past Saturday, we had a big project with the EAC and volunteers and township staff. We had two simultaneous plantings going on. One, Ken took it with EAC and members over at the native plant garden. I understand a big part of it was involved was weeding, which slows things up by that's the time of year. They planted like 500 plugs and native plants.
Wow.
And then we had another crew in which I worked with Stephanie and Hal. And thank you to everybody that came out, by the way, both family, you know, friends and other volunteers and scouts and everybody else and Adventure Crew 52 and Dalva College. But we had planted about 200, Dalva University. We had planted about 200 native trees over along the back of the Neiman, you know, the field, Neiman Track back there in the field while it was wet. The weather did cooperate. We got to get those all in the ground and mulch them. So, it was great. They had two, it's one thing to do one project, but they had two large planting projects on the same day coordinated and I think it went very well. So, thank you to everybody that came out and I'm reminded that there's an ongoing need. Maybe it could be considered some ongoing maintenance even over the native plant garden as far as, Ken and I were talking about weeding and such, but if you're interested in that, doesn't mean it's only one scheduled time. Contact the township or somebody from the EAC if you want to volunteer anytime.
That's great, thanks.
That's all I got.
Good work. Thanks. Ken, do you have anything?
Just to build a little bit on that, but we've got to give a shout out to Janine Mitchell who designed that native garden. And on her own time, and Marty Brooks drove up to Quakertown to buy all the plugs. They had a total of 700 plugs which they bought, so they have some, a few more to put in, but she's done an excellent job and all the other volunteers that help out. It's the same, pretty much the same group once a month, so they're, they're doing a great job. The other thing I just want to make a comment on is we were talking about this at the Ways and Means Committee, the last one we had, and as we were going through the first quarter budget and where we are against plan and, you know, sometimes things happen and we do them and we know, it makes sense, but we don't communicate how nice and how good it is that we do that. Just a simple thing about electricity, because they went through a large program last year to change out the light bulbs, the LEDs, and the percentage like for the streetlights, where we were spending last quarter, or last year for the same period of time, was $18,000. Now, we're spending like $9,000. So, we cut that in half. And then in the public works, that also went down about 8%. And it's because of the program that was done last year, which you don't realize the benefit until this year. So, it was a great job.
Yeah, I remember when we bought those lights that you said it was going to take, what, five years to realize, I mean, for the --
For the payoff.
To recoup the pay.
But we're seeing it in first quarter, so that's the benefit.
Well, it's paying off what we actually put out for the purchase. That's great. Starting to see it already. Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it.
I think that's a great point. So, often we, me included, we, we put ourselves behind a program and we spend the money in the hopes of reaping future benefits. It's nice to know that we did. I didn't know that, so I appreciate that update. Since the last board meeting, Stephanie and I, it was government week, so Stephanie and I went to see and --
That's great.
Talk to and present government, good government, to second and third graders. So, it was a couple hundred of them at Warwick Elementary and then at Milk Creek. And I, you always come away amazed. I, for one thing, they knew, whatever you think of the five people, they knew the five presidential candidates.
No way.
This is two, this is what, seven and eight-year-old kids? So, for, for whatever you might think, it's been a good process to get family, teachers, and spreading it down to the kids on voting. I mean, even John Kasich, they knew them all.
Even John Kasich.
Well, you know, that was a hard one. Every, they knew, the first four were easy. That was a little bit of a -- The other thing we did, based on the teacher asking us to do a mock budget, and at the end, you brought in less money than you needed to do the jobs. And we asked them which one to eliminate and unfortunately, we, one of the items was snow removal and they realized that if we didn't remove the snow, that they would be off of school.
Get off the school.
So, we're going to have to re, we're going to have to take that off of the hypothetical budget because that was, they all agreed, two teachers in fact, also agreed to take that. But good job anyway getting them to school, Dick. They, deep down, they'll appreciate it. DTMA, another good meeting. The Board is getting very aggressive, going out and getting new customers, visiting, planning to visit new customers and some customers that have already told us no, going back out and saying, hey, how about giving us a second shot at it? So, that's going very well. I'm happy there. And the Sewer Committee, very enthusiastic group. I appreciate the changes that we all agreed to make on that committee and it's, it's going very well, a very enthusiastic group. Everybody participated, which is, is very good. In case any of you are free in June, we're going to have a discussion on our 537 plan at the Sewer Committee meeting and our DEP rep is going to come to the June meeting and explain to us what he thinks we can and should do and how to do it. And as far as the Planning Commission, we cleaned up some ordinances. You'll see them coming eventually. Some, some of the ordinances needed a little bit cleaning up and straightening up. And we also had, excuse me, a sketch plan from what's known as the Cowan Property, which is behind Tabor Homes. So, that was a very interesting and exciting meeting, so we may be seeing that in the near future. And that's all I did the last couple of weeks.
Thanks, very much.
Other than PSATs, by the way.
Oh, PSATs, yes. Okay. Anything, Ryan?
Just one quick suggestion in terms of with, you know, when you're looking at the announcements, we have a lot of great events coming up. And if on Facebook, there is, there's a couple different pages, like the Doylestown page. I don't know if you guys see that, but there's like thousands of followers on the Doylestown page. And just recently, one of them had posted, "Anybody know when touch a truck is?" So, I responded back with the date. But can, what, what would be nice is that if we become a member of this Doylestown Facebook page, we can post these events.
I'm a member.
Yeah, so.
I put personally.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, but we should, so we should make sure we post all of these events because that's just a, everybody goes on that Facebook page for like what's going on in the area. So, if people aren't necessarily following the township social media, they're going to see it on here. So, you know, because just you're looking at this, there's a lot of cool stuff coming up.
I can put my own, my personal, if we could do a little bit.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure the administrator Chuck Hall like would, would welcome us to be a member on that page.
Okay, because I know it's a closed, kind of a closed group.
It's a closed group, but you can just, if you, you can click Request to Become a Member. I mean, there's no reason they wouldn't accept us, so. Just a small suggestion.
Good suggestion. Thanks. Anything else?
That's it. It comes out from me.
You can't, we can't hear you.
She posts it personally on her, from her page, but if Doylestown Township posted it, it'd be nice, so.
Yeah.
That's all.
I mean, I can hear you, but they can't hear you. Who's going to be yelling at me? All right. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, our Resolution of the Traffic Signal for Lower State Road and New Britton Road. Now, there's one there now.
There is, there is, but this will be modified for pedestrian access. This is part of the Lower State Road Trail that we're doing, part of the TAP grant and those improvements so that we'll have better pedestrian access at that intersection because of the trail that we'll be going in.
Is there a motion to offer as the execution of this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question?
Question. Does the funding for the work, does that come out of the grant as well?
It's part of the $1 million point two grant.
It's part of the grant, okay.
Motion and a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Land Development requests for an extension on 651 North Shady Retreat. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the last item on the agenda is the proclamation for Carolyn Dela Rodolfo, who, you know, is retiring from her current position as Chairman of the Board, needs to be corrected. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I'd like that motion to approve.
It has a correction, but I'll, we'll correct it and then I'll sign it. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll execute that and send it off to those folks who just could be honored in some event somewhere in early June. I'm not sure exactly. All right. Next, our announcements. Reiterating the announcements, the next meeting of this Board is Tuesday, May 17th at 7:00 p.m. We're going to be closed May 30th for Memorial Day. Touch a Truck is Saturday, May 7th and it's free from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. A Home Run Derby is Thursday, May 12th at Turk Baseball Fields. You have to check in at 4:30. Pre-registration's required, but it is a free event. Family Fund and Fitness is Saturday, May 15th at Central Park, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's also free. Barkminster is free. Saturday, May 21st, 2016, Central Park from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. It's a fun, fun event. Township Golf Outing, June 6th at Doylestown Country Club. Registration deadline is May 15th. I do believe it's a --
A 9:00 a.m. shotgun start.
Shotgun start, so we have a box lunch, you have continental breakfast and you have a nice, well, not a box lunch, you have a nice lunch afterwards with steaks and everything, continental breakfast. It's a, it's a wonderful event, a lot of fun, and we are registering golfers now. So, that's June 6th at the Country, Doylestown Country Club. And our next budget session, Budget Work Session is June 14th at 4:00 p.m. and everyone is welcome. That's it. We're going to retire to executive session.
The Board will be discussing litigation matters, personnel matters, and real estate matters.
And we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for coming again, John. Yes, thanks, John. Thank you. World out there.